The school bully for Putnam County is officially called to order this Tuesday, September the 1st, 2020, 3:30 p.m. A pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. David Buckles and our invocation by Mr. Bud McInnes, and then we will have our presentation by Mrs. Jennifer Azula.
All stand, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we pray? Lord, we thank you today for this day with grateful hearts. We thank you for your love and your faithfulness. Lord, be with us in this meeting.
Please.
And, Lord, we ask that you continue to protect our students, our parents, our staff, our family members, and extended family members throughout the year.
Please.
And always. And, Lord, we just ask for you, there are so many that have heavy hearts, we just ask that you comfort them.
Please.
With the peace that goes beyond all understanding. They may be struggling through an addiction, a divorce, unemployment, they might be hungry, Lord. We just ask that you comfort them in your mighty way, and we ask this in your name, your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this time, Mrs. Jennifer Azula, the presentation.
Thank you for having me this afternoon. I just wanted to take a minute and share with you all and with the community a few extra support steps that we've put in place this year, thinking about our families. And we know that this year is unlike any other that any of us have ever experienced. And we have some great supports in place for our educators as far as coaching and some professional learning that's kind of outside of the box. But the more we've been out in schools and the more we've had a chance to interact with our parents and our families, we have heard just an outcry from them about, can you help me navigate these tools and these different resources as well? And so to help meet that need, we've started a series that are called Friday Family Learning Bytes. And this past Friday, I'm happy to share that we had our very first one, and it was iReady Preparing for the Diagnostic. And in this session, we worked specifically with our PCSD digital families on how to help ensure that their students have the best possible environment to get ready to take that diagnostic assessment. And also make sure that they understood what the individualized and the grade level path within that system really are and what they mean for support of their children. So that was this past Friday. I'm happy to share that for a starting point, we did really well. We had about 45 folks register. We had about 38 show up for that session. And I'd like to give a huge shout out to our Browning Pierce Bears who represented a great deal of those families that were in presence. But we also had some from CeeLo, Kelly Smith, Aquila, Miller Middle, Robert H. Jenkins, and William D. Mosley. So it was a great start. I'm here today to share with you a couple of upcoming sessions that we have in hopes that we can get the word out. Our first, our second one is this Friday, and it is Connecting with Canvas: Becoming a Parent Observer. And as a mama, yes ma'am, you have the flyer in your packet, and we'll put a few of these outside available too. But as a mom and as a district team member, this has been one of those things that I've heard the most questions about, is what is Canvas? How does it work? And can you please help me figure out how to help my child stay on track within Canvas? And so this coming Friday, we're going to have four repeating sessions. The registration link is on the flyer. And I do want to make note that we have our incredible Jamie Vera from our team who's going to be available at the last session of the day to do some Spanish translation. So we'll record that session. We'll get that session up on the website as well. The following Friday, we're doing a session that's devoted only to independent reading. And so in that session, we're going to talk a lot about one of our newest products, which our families are loving. I know, because when I get the feedback, I figure it's either going to be really, really great, or there's something I need to work on. And I've got a lot of really great around this Myon program. And so that Friday, September 11th, will be all around how to help your child set up their own personalized digital library in Myon. And Myon, for those who don't know, connects also with our Accelerated Reader Program. So for students who are motivated by that, I know some are not, but some really are motivated by that, they have an opportunity to read their Myon books and then go directly into the Accelerated Reader site to take those quizzes and earn those points, for those that that's a motivator for. So those are just two upcoming sessions. Be looking for more, but I'm hoping that you'll help me and spread the word so that we can help support as many families in this as we possibly can.
I do, I have a question.
Sure.
If a parent couldn't attend one of those sessions, then it'll be on the district website?
Yes, we recorded the iReady session, and actually I just, I left Tim Kenny, a phone call with Tim Kenny from Curriculum Associates, to come down here. He has made the recording available, so we'll get that up just as soon as possible. We did not have the Spanish translation piece for that session, but we will for all of our upcoming sessions. So our goal is to have at least one where we know that we have Jamie available to help us out in that regard. So we're excited to make those public, so those who cannot attend can still go back and watch the presentations.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
And to Mrs. Azula and her team, we certainly do thank them, because this is another way that we reach out and keep our parents connected with the school district and with their child school and what's happened, so that they can help their children. At this time, we're ready for our public comments, and we do have two that have requested to come before the board. The first one is classroom issues, and this is going to be Mr. Dave Mathia. If you will come at this time, sir, give us your name, address, and if you would share with us, please.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Appreciate it. My name is Dave Mathia. I live on Western Putnam County, near Hawthorne. And here basically to speak for my wife. She's a fifth grade teacher at Aquila.
Dave, excuse me, can you give your address for the record?
You want the specific address?
Well, I mean, I think that's what we, you just can't just specify.
Past meetings, they just wanted a town, but.
Okay.
110 Lake Meakin Lane.
Thank you.
My wife is a fifth grade teacher at Aquila. She does the online class for them. It's been pretty stressful. And one reason she's not here today is because she's still there. She has, if I'll ask now, 45 kids in her online class. And from her relating to me, there's a first grade, second grade, third grade online class being taught out of Aquila. Each one of those teachers has more than 40 kids online. And roughly 50% of the entire school at Aquila is online. And I think more attention needs to be directed to the online resources due to this situation. There's just no way you can keep the attention of 45 students and do a job that's being asked of these teachers. It's just not possible, you know? And I really pity the first, first grades and second grades trying to keep those poor kids in line. They have IT issues. I'm sure the staff is probably pretty well aware of this. Internet was pretty well out yesterday, very, very sporadic at Aquila. I don't know if that's school, but I, maybe work, first day of classes, state might have crashed the internet. And of course, Canvas. I can understand why they need to teach the parents. The teachers are still working the bugs out of Canvas, trying to figure out class outlines to put out for the students and how to make it work for them. So it's still a project in works. This is going to be a year-long situation. The idea that this may go away has been refuted by medical experts that expect a wave in the fall of increased coronavirus and plus just the interactions with students in the close proximity that they are in. One of the issues that is brought, she has mentioned, what happens if she has to have a day off? From what I understand, there's no provisions for an online sub. And if there is an online sub, my wife can barely handle the logistics and the knowledge necessary to manage this online. How are you training the subs? And are they available? My understanding also is the two other fifth grade teachers that are trying to synchronize with her are all in Canvas. They're all trying to have the same class, the same day, online and in class, which is good. But the brick and mortar teachers are even struggling more because they even got less instruction than the online teachers did. And so now they're trying to get caught up on this too. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Like I said, I'm sure staff is aware of it, but I wanted the school board to be aware of it. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And duly noted, and those that are responsible for that have heard and will start some kind of movement. Thank you. Okay, we're now ready. Employees, classroom environment, and digital families, Mrs. Sarah Weeks, an employee.
Hi, I'd like to respectfully request if I could have five minutes, because I'm representing a few other people who couldn't be here. And I'm asking that at the beginning out of respect.
Okay, let's see. Employees, classroom environment, and digital families.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll go ahead and grant you five minutes.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't have a problem. I know we had. We had someone, yeah.
All right, will you state your name, Mrs. Weeks?
Sarah Weeks. My address is 5961 White Sands Road. Mr. Buckles, you shared that employees should not be scared to come forward and speak and that we shouldn't fear retaliation. So I'm here today to represent some of your employees, as well as some students and families. The full speech is a long read, so I've just prepared a few of the most important points, and I'll share the original text after today's meeting. While I was happy to finally see students last week, I also had a lot of concerns. First, the district requires students to sanitize their own workspaces. This takes time away from learning, is ineffective at best, and at worst, creates a hazardous work environment for both my students and myself, since I often find that I am the one who ends up doing some or all of the sanitizing between classes without proper PPE, like gloves. If the district wanted secondary students to safely change classrooms every day, we should have prepared by hiring enough trained custodial staff to do this properly near the end of each class period. We could have hired dozens of new custodial staff members with just a portion of the 4.3 million we received in the CARES funding. Class sizes are a second major issue. I've spoken with teachers from other schools who have been assigned classes of 30 or more. Even in my own relatively small classes of 20 to 22 students, there's just no way to safely space them even three feet apart. I can't imagine being forced to cram 30 nearly adult-sized kids into my room and simultaneously trying to prevent spreading or contracting a super contagious virus. If we should be avoiding gatherings of more than 10 people in all other areas of our lives, why are we sitting for 90 minutes in groups of 30? Our site-level administrators are not responsible for these issues, and they do not have resources to solve them. The solutions to these problems needed to come from the district. I would like to ask this question that maybe the board can answer at a later time. How has the 4.3 million in CARES money been spent? And why was it not spent on hiring larger numbers of janitorial staff and/or more teachers in the secondary schools to reduce class sizes? Tons of sanitizer, wipes, and masks are Band-Aid fixes for systemic problems that could have been better addressed by hiring more personnel. Finally, I would like to question our treatment of option two. In the full text of my speech, I'll read the story of my own family's horrible experience with district-provided tech that was not functioning at even a basic level for its intended purpose. In a July 9th interview, the superintendent said the district would be spending a considerable amount of money on the distance learning equipment itself in order to be able to provide these services. But I don't see where this money has been spent on tech that these digital students are actually using. The Chromebooks that are being offered to families do not appear to be new, and they are sorely in need of updates, patches, maintenance, and repair that has clearly not happened over the summer. To find out why our district chose not to prioritize plans for digital learning before we started the year, we must look no further than the view shared twice in the same training by a particular district official. Quote, "Many of those option-two families have real legitimate reasons for needing that online option," thereby suggesting that COVID itself is not a legitimate reason. Though a few I know do share, do not share this view, many times I've heard people in positions of power within the district refer to their expectation that students will be, quote, "flowing back into brick and mortar after the first few weeks of online instruction." We must pause and ask ourselves, why are we making this assumption? Any and all families who have selected option-two for their children during this pandemic have real legitimate concerns for the safety of their family, and these concerns should be honored and respected. Children have the right to learn from an environment in which they feel safe and secure. It's alarming to me how we, as a district, seem to have taken a single stance behind the scenes on what is best for the children of our community, ignoring the voices of the families who have selected option-two for themselves. We are a district that says a prayer at the beginning of our board meetings. Today, I challenge us to also be a district who lives out that faith by seeking to serve and meet the needs of all of our families in the ways they have requested, even when it's not the easy thing to do or does not fit our own personal narratives about what education should look like this school year. If I can do this myself by re-entering the potentially dangerous brick-and-mortar classroom, then our district can also do this by demonstrating equal respect for the wishes of our option-two families and meeting them where they are with the technology and support that they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Superintendent, is there a possibility we need to report that we could possibly entertain some cases?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Right. Public hearing, amendment to policy number 8450, control casual contact communicable diseases.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we amend, make the amendment to the policy, approve it, to policy number 8450, control of casual contact communicable diseases.
I'll second.
All right, it's the motion by Mr. Buckles that we will accept item C1, amendment to policy number 8450, control casual contact communicable diseases, and second by Mrs. Harley Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. Item D, item is approved by the superintendent under the emergency power.
Do we need to go by one by one on this, Madam Chairman?
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve number one, 2020 to 2021 Personnel allocations change number six, 6.1 through 6.2.
I'll second that.
All right, it's the motion by Mr. David Buckles that we approve item 2020, 2021 Personnel Change Number Six, 6.1 to 6.2, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item number two, paid temporary worker after the fact.
Second.
All right, it's the motion by Mrs. Harley Pickens that we accept item 2D to pay temporary worker after the fact, and it was second by Mr. Bud McInnes. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve amendment to additional days for two transportation employees approved on 7/14/2020 to include an hourly rate.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Jane Crawford that item D3, amendment to additional days, two transportation employees approved on 7/14/2020 to include hourly rate, and second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposing, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item number four, agreement with Agape Interpreting Services.
Second.
All right, it's the motion by Mrs. Harley Pickens that we accept item D4, agreement with Agape Interpreting Services, and second by Mr. Bud McInnes. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. We are now ready for our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mr. McInnes.
I had nothing to pull.
All righty, thank you, sir. Mrs. Crawford? No, I had all my questions answered. I have nothing to pull. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. David Buckles?
I came in early, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Pickens?
I have nothing to pull.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And I have nothing to pull. So we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, it's the motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda as printed, and second by Mrs. Harley Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. We have no emergency items, okay? And we have no unfinished business, our new business. Item number one, discussion input and action, resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent during this time.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve giving the superintendent emergency powers. I'll second that.
All right, it's the motion by Mrs. Harley Pickens that we continue to give the superintendent, continue to grant the superintendent emergency powers, and it was second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. This time, we are ready for our reports. Mrs. Pickens, we'll start with you this time.
Thank you. Are we going to ask questions after everybody makes their remarks?
That's our view. We can have staff available to answer questions.
Yeah, that works better.
Yeah, I think so. Well, first off, I was real pleased with how the first week of school went, at least in the South End. I visited the schools. I, as Coach Cummings, our dean of students at Crescent City, he said, "They don't really like all the rules with the one-way traffic in the halls, but they know the reason why, and they're doing it." And they really hadn't had any problem with the masks. Mr. Adams has a traffic pattern around Miller that's really, really well thought out. And Mr. Simons, they, and I, they said, "You should come and see our lunch." And I, you know, they have a very small cafeteria, considering that it's such a large elementary school. And I said, "You know, I've been in the school system for 34 years, and I've never really had to do lunch duty." And so, so they invited me, said it starts. It starts at 10:45, so I'm planning on being there one day next week. And then, one problem that I did hear addressed, not by the, the public comment, but within the schools, is the students changing from option-two to option-one. And, you know, it's very difficult with Cambridge and then parents wanting it done right away. That was one, one thing that I heard. And my question is, are we going to put like a deadline on that? Are we going to continue to do that?
We'll address that, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And one thing, last night, I was watching the video of the first week of school, and I saw a comment at the end, and the fact that we didn't recognize the maintenance department. And I thought, you know, they are unsung heroes. They don't have direct student contact, so they don't get noticed a lot. But it's amazing the work that they do. They keep the air conditioning running, and like Regina Kears, who was a former player of mine, she is the painter extraordinaire, and she just works so diligently. So I would just like to give a shout out to our maintenance department.
All right, with the maintenance department.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
I would like to thank the lady that came, and we do need to hear from our employees, and they do not certainly have to fear any retaliation from a school board member, because we have no control over the employees. They work for the superintendent. So I empathize with her problem, and I look forward to, to hearing from the superintendent. I'm excited about some of the volleyball and some of the activities going on, and I just, it never ceases to amaze me how, how our employees have risen to the occasion to fight through this, this process. I just, I'm so proud of them, and I'll, and we all worry about them and are extremely concerned about them and our children. And so far, so good. And I think there's been a lot of prayer throughout the communities of Putnam County, and I don't think it can help hurt us a bit in the world to have all that we can, we can get. And as problems arise, we need people to come and let us know. And I see Mark back there. I'm sure he's back in toot at Thomas, because he would get most of the calls that would come in. And anyway, other than that, I'm looking forward to a, a little cooler weather. And, and that concludes my presentation. I'll wait to hear from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. All right, Mrs. Crawford? I've got a couple of things. Like Holly, I've heard many good things from parents about the opening of school. The students, of the parents that I talked to, the children, the parents I talked to, were just so happy to get back into, into school that I think they, you know, they'll, they've been very compliant, following the rules about wearing masks and going down one side of the hallway. And so, everything I heard was good, really. I haven't, but I'm not on Facebook anymore, so I haven't been able to read any of the negative stuff. But, you know, and we're going to learn as we go, and it's not going to ever be perfect, just like it was never perfect before coronavirus, virus. But we're all doing the best that we can to get, to get as good as we can. I want to make a request. I would like to have an edge update. I would like to try to find out how many students they have that are attending, and just, you know, it's, it's time, as a board, as they're governing, you know, that we're kind of basically in control in a certain aspect. I'd just like to have another update.
Would you like to, like, get any information now, or do you want at the next meeting? Or when would you like that information?
Next meeting's fine. I mean, I don't even necessarily think they have.
They're coming up to settle here?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, you know, kind of an idea of how, how their first week went and how they're doing. Yeah, it can be in a month. I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll have somebody at the next meeting, if that's okay, on the 15th, bring back some information.
I had the opportunity to attend, thanks to Felicia for reminding me, product of Putnam honoring Calvin Murray. He was one of my former students, and he is an employee of Lowe's, and Rick and I were there, and it was just unbelievable. They have a morning meeting every morning, apparently, and the manager meets with the whole crew that can come, that aren't working with a customer. How many would you say, 30 or so?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
We all gathered in the appliance department. And the things he said about Calvin as an employee, I already knew, because those were the things that I said about Calvin Murray as a teacher. How he was always like a ray of sunshine in my class. He was always upbeat, one of the most respectful students I have ever taught. And he always tried to help me when there were some other students in there that weren't being so nice and so respectful. So once again, this So, once again, this thing that we do, Product of Putnam, it's just wonderful. I think Calvin was so honored by the things that were said about him, by Rick, by me, by his manager, you know, that it just, those memories will always be with him. So I appreciate the fact that y'all are doing that. And the last thing is, I thought I was going to get out of getting up at 5:00 on Friday mornings for the foreseeable future, but we are going to have Palacka High School football prayer breakfast. I'll get up and scramble eggs, and do all that stuff, so, you know, any of y'all are invited to attend. I don't even know what the date of the first football game is.
Holly can show you how to cook.
It's this Friday?
For the Palacka High game, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll be there this Friday.
Usually the breakfast is on the day of a game.
Yeah, 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 the breakfasts are always on game days, I just didn't realize that there was a football game Friday. And other than, you know, addressing the issues and questions that were brought up during public comment, I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. McInnes?
Okay, I wanted to thank Misses Zula for that presentation, very, looks really great for the parents, appreciate you doing that. Been involved in a little bit of training myself, the school board, and the district. I do have a PSA announcement, a public service announcement. There's been legislation last year that any driver caught in a school zone with their phone, it's severe. Yeah, finally, right? So I just let that be known, because my observation when I drive, even through school zones, is pretty sad what drivers do, so. Also, the 315 crosswalk, I observed it one day last week, there are about three times more students at Price Middle School that used it than the high school, it's working fabulously. And another observation, the Courier-Journal put a little display, I think in their paper, Palm Avenue's primary example, I witnessed this, a school bus stopped, and it has no median in the middle, so technically you are not, you are, all vehicles in both lanes are supposed to stop when a bus stops. Well, the car's heading south, the bus was heading north, I was the first car in the left lane where the bus was in the right, and cars kept coming. So that, you need to be aware, Palm Avenue is stopped during a bus stop, both sides. And one other thing that came up, I guess over the weekend they had a little fender bender at QI, but that was resolved to Mr. Joe Theobald, and I believe Officer Jones.
Don't black me that dare to do.
Excuse me. I know we don't talk much as a board, but I was wondering, kind of reflecting back on the last meeting we had, and I don't want to step on toes, but I appreciate Ms. Weeks coming and presenting some more concerns, because we don't want to be in a position that our employees can't come up and talk to us, that is a hostile environment. So, I still have a lot of questions about the survey. When I went home that night, there's a lot of surveys online, I mean, at that time of the year, there were surveys left and right about education, and.
Where were they?
You just type in "survey." You can Google it, I don't Google everything, so it was out there. So I still have some questions about the task force, and really, you knew, went here to answer a couple of them, so I'll leave it at that.
Can you ask them?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Okay, mine, real quick, just kudos to the district by bilingual interpreter, when she walked in last board meeting, and I was unaware, I don't know if you all were aware of it, and then in our agenda, it talked about a sign language interpreter, and I think, not think, I know we're moving in the right direction, because we want everyone to have a voice, and to be heard. The precautions of the mask, I did have a chance to not go in Brown and Pierce, because I understand, right now, they're trying to get everything sorted out themselves, and get students where they need to be, and my little great-great niece is a pre-K student there, and so I was in the line when they were being dismissed, and all of them, just as cute as could be, had their mask on, and all of the employees, and so I'm just so pleased about that. It's possible it's the new normal, I'm not sure. To our teachers, students, staff, administrators, our custodial staff, our bus drivers, our food service workers, every one of you made a difference in helping us to get off to as smooth as possible first week. We know there were bumps in the road, we understand that, even in families, there are bumps, but to know that they're out there trying to do the very best they can for what they have, we appreciate that so much. And then, just one last thing, I've been following why I like Putnam, you know, live in Putnam, and I've been reading some of the things, and it just makes you proud to be, you know, a Putnam Countyan.
You're good.
Yeah, and so, because I saw one of my classmates in there, and I happened to run into him in Walmart, and you would have thought he was on Dancing with the Stars or something, because he was just red bagging, just bragging about it. So it is a good thing, all people want to know is that we notice them, we care about them, and we want to make a difference. So with that, I guess I'm glad you go ahead and do it.
Okay, I was telling Rick today, and many of you may have seen it in the paper, but it was special to me, because my dad was superintendent of schools when it happened, but 62 years ago today, St. John's River Junior College opened their doors for students for the very first time. And those classes were held in the education building at the Church I-10, First Baptist Palacka, for a year, until they finished building the main building on that campus off of St. John's Avenue. So, that's exciting, so 62 years old.
Very nice.
Awesome, all right. Mrs. Charlie, is it Charlie that you?
I guess the biggest update, and all of you have heard it already, is that the FEA lawsuit went from the Circuit Court judge to the First District Court of Appeal, that's where it currently stands. The First District did not send it immediately to the Florida Supreme Court for determination. So as things stand now, it's status quo, it really does not impact the current reopening plans of the district, and if anything, it just reaffirms that school boards are autonomous, and they are able to act in the best interest of their students, and that is really what the crux of the underlying Circuit Court order was all about. And we'll see how the First District Court of Appeal rules on it, but most districts around the state are continuing with their plans, I think there were maybe only one or two that were really waiting on an appellate decision, or the Circuit Court decision. And then there was a stay at the Circuit Court, kind of getting to the weeds on the legal side of things, but as it relates to Putnam County specifically, everything will continue on track as it has already begun.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
All right, Mrs. Superintendent?
Yeah, I have a few comments, and then we have staff available to answer questions, and they've already prepared to, you know, do that. Just want to brag on all of our school staff and district staff for a great opening week last week, and I think you've heard some of that already, but we fanned out, and we're in all the schools, and, you know, our principals have really done a great job organizing their schools to meet the needs of our students, both online and face-to-face. And yeah, there's a few bumps in the road, but I was very pleased with the fact that our students have been very compliant, I think they just, the ones that are face-to-face just love to be there, and see their teachers again, and see their peers. So the schools I've seen have been nothing but upbeat, and I'm very pleased with what I saw. I was actually at Brandon Pierce today, and I went into one teacher's classroom who was teaching first grade digitally, and I went in, and when I joined her, so she introduced me to her class, you know, and she had all these little squares with all the little first graders there, and that was kind of neat, but she was reading them a story, and it's really neat, if you get a chance to, you know, visit some of our teachers, they're doing a remarkable job, so really neat. As Miss Crawford talked about, we do have a football game this Friday, but we are making very clear preparations for our athletic events, you know, we don't want to take those for granted, football and volleyball right now, and some other sports, but we do have some clear protocols in place to ensure that both the players and the spectators are safe, we are requiring face coverings in all of our athletic events, and we're telling our visitors, you know, the same, so when they come there, that, you know, they'll be prepared. And we'll have extra masks in case somebody forgets. Right, so we are, we're trying to be very careful, we'll learn a lot after Friday night, if we need to make some adjustments, we'll do that, but Mr. Heston's done a good job in working with our athletic directors, in making sure that, you know, we're very clear on the safety protocols. I do want, in case somebody's asked, we have just started printing or publicizing a district dashboard for both student and staff positive cases, and student and staff exposures that take place in the school. So that is on our website, we'll be printing that or publishing that every single Monday based on the previous week. So again, we're doing it as a district, and we want to be very transparent, make sure our public knows what's going on in the school, we have worked very closely with our health department, you know, to make sure they are okay with that. And so again, we want to keep our public informed about what's going on, so that is on our website. Our renaming committee that you asked, that was brought to us, Mr. Bowen is heading that up, the committee's already been formed, and their first meeting will be tomorrow, and I'm sure by the next meeting we'll be able to bring some information back to you. Is that accurate? Finally, this is a statewide phenomenon, but every district in the state, probably with the exception of one, is looking at a decrease in enrollment. And of course, the first week or two of school, you're always going to have people that won't show up till maybe after Labor Day, or after whatever, but we are trying to find a lot of students, and I just want to say publicly, parents, if you have students out there and they have not responded, please do so. I mean, we need to know where they are, we need to know if they're going to be face-to-face, or option two, or option three, or if they're withdrawing and going to another school, but again, we need to know those where they are, and we will do everything in our power to reach out to them, but if you can at least just call the school and say, we will, my child will be back on such and such a day, that's all we need to know, we need information where they are. A lot of numbers change and that type of thing, so we need them to reach out to us. So with that said, I'm going to ask Ms. France to be available to answer questions, I know there's been some questions about option two that were brought up by one of our speakers, and I think she can also answer questions about some of our CARES funds, and then Mr. Boeing and Mr. Harvey are here to answer questions about any of the cleaning protocols, and about our technology, right? If you'll ask questions, and if we need additional personnel, we'll be glad to do that.
I was listening at Channel 4 yesterday, I think it was Monday, maybe Tuesday, Monday, and they said that they're missing over 4,000 students that have not enrolled anywhere, anywhere, and so, you know, I thought that was quite alarming.
Yeah, well, and as you know, funding is tied to students, and we are desperately trying to find them, so.
And I can understand the concern that parents may have, but you have to do something. You've got to choose, hey, I'm going to do it at home, online, whatever.
But we want, if there's a question about safety or anything, we want to answer that, we want to answer their questions if that is a concern, but just don't keep them at home, that's not going to resolve it. So we're here to answer questions, and if you want to maybe focus on option two questions and the CARES money, or anything else that Laura can answer?
So that's what I stepped out for a second to grab my computer, so I could grab some of the numbers for you, so I want to give you just some numbers to start with. Right now, we have in the computer a way to figure out who's an option one student and who's an option two student, and that is fluid. So as much as I would like to say it's not, it isn't, and I'll give you how fluid it is in just a second. Currently, we have 7,770 students in option one, and we have 3,223 students in option two. So those are your numbers for how many students we currently have from option one, and how many students we have in option two. Now, not every student in option one or two has attended yet, and we have about 1,600 students that we are under projection, and about 600 from option one and two that have yet to sign in or come to school.
So is that the total number that are unaccounted for, 1,600?
1,600 under projection, like, so what we assumed we were going to get based on our current numbers, and how you're looking at your census data and things like that, but who is enrolled, and who has shown up? We are a thousand short, about a thousand short, on Friday, and we're about 600 short today. So that means between Friday and today, 400 kids showed up.
You don't have a breakdown from option one and option two, do you?
I do, but I don't, it's not that easy to get to. So tomorrow I'll be able to tell you that, but right now I can tell you that there are about 600 kids who signed up for option one or two, and they have not attended yet. And the schools are actually sending those in today to me, for whether they know that a child has, I'm just thinking of ones that I had, reading from the principals, this child has moved to the panhandle, but no one has requested records yet. So it's kind of scary just to say the kid has gone, you need to find out really truly that they've enrolled somewhere. So the principals know where many of the students are, we just still have them on our rolls, because no one has requested data for them yet, okay?
I definitely remember, one of the things we had to do as administrators, we had to do a warm body count, that would be crazy.
But I was going to say.
That are watching from a distance.
They still have to do it.
So we actually tried that on Friday, and it was not easy, because the kids that are digital are really hard to figure out. So today, we started really combing through Skyward and finding the kids who had not shown up yet, according to Skyward, and sending that data to the schools and saying, do you know about these children? And actually, we're getting a lot better return on information that way. How fluid those numbers are between option one and two, I'll just give you three schools, and I'm doing Aquila, Price, and IHS, mostly because they're all in the West End, but we had a teacher from Price, and a spouse from Aquila. So just this last week, between the beginning of school and today, at Aquila, 27 students requested to return to option one, 24 kids asked to move to option two. So it's a constant back and forth, and we are trying to make parents feel comfortable with the choices that they've made. Price had 24 that moved to option one from two to one, and 37 that went from option one to two. IHS had 24 that went to option one, and 73 that went to option two. So you can see how fluid that number is, and it's really hard to just say, it's almost impossible to say we're going to stop, because really and truly, we have to honor what parents want. Right, and then, we're just, as parents are trying to make those changes, and what's best for their families, we're doing that, but it takes days, doesn't, you can't change your day today and think you're going to be in classes immediately, and being served. So it does take time every time a person wants to make that change. And those are just numbers I could easily pull, because those schools have used a form that we've sent back and forth to families, so we can kind of catalog it. Some schools aren't asking for the form, they're taking the phone calls over, you know, they're taking the phone call and the request, and they're taking care of it, those are just ones that I could pull their forms, and I could see that there was back and forth movement. Those are just ones that I could pull their forms and I could see that there was back and forth movement.
So, does that mean that they're gonna be able to change back and forth all year long?
So we can only offer the Innovative Option Plan as long as the state allows us to offer the Innovative Option Plan. So at the semester end, if the state says, okay, everybody has to go back to brick and mortar, that's what we have to do. We are only able to offer it right now at this time because it's, the state has allowed it. And they have been very clear that it is a reopening plan, not a whole year plan.
But let's say it does last all year.
Then it could be back and forth. Your students, so you're, it's very difficult, which is why teachers, we gave them a couple of, we gave on the Friday prior to school, and Jen, if she's still in here, she could probably cover it better than me, although I attended, but she led it. We gave the teachers who were, that we knew were doing option two, kind of a preview before they came to work as to some of the things, the assurances we had to guarantee so that we could offer option one or option two and some of the expectations. And so part of that is, Ms. Crawford, if you're teaching English one, you need to follow the pacing guide for English one, whether you're digital or whether you're face to face, because the student does have the ability to go back and forth and it's not fair for the child to not be on pace.
Well, that's not even what I'm concerned about. I'm just concerned about the kid that says, oh, I've had, you know, I'm home doing option two, I'm a little bored, I wanna see my friends. He goes back for a couple of weeks and said, well, I'm getting sick of this, then he goes back to option two. I mean, are we gonna allow that all year long? I mean.
Don't believe we actually have an opportunity to not allow it.
We can't, we can't stop that.
I think because we're so centered on parent choice, that those choices are needing to be fluid. And that was clear when you had to write your reopening plan, that those choices are about what the parent requests. And so option three actually is no longer available to parents. If a parent wanted to choose option three, it's closed. And if a parent misses their appointment this week, they are not going to be in option three. We have done all we can do to help people get enrolled in my district virtual, the Putnam Virtual Franchise. And as people will not keep their appointments, we cannot keep spaces open. So I will say that option three is closed unless you, unless you have an appointment. And if you have an appointment and you miss it this week, you will be reverted back to your school because we cannot keep that option open anymore. There were like 178 students who had been enrolled. That does not mean that that's every student that has, is going to be enrolled because we wait until we have the parent meeting and that the school, that the virtual school picks those students up.
So we have spaces for the ones we have meetings with?
Yes. I will say that Nefect is the person who actually hires the teachers for the Putnam Virtual Franchise and they are trying to actively hire more teachers. It has also come to our attention that FLVS is closed. FLV, you could not go full-time FLVS at this time, but it's also our understanding that right now FLVS will not even take flex kids from homeschool because they also are overwhelmed with the parents who have made that choice and made the choice late.
I'm not surprised.
So I'm gonna address CARES real quick, just because I had access to it on the computer. Yes, we received $4.3 million. Part of that money does have to go to the charter schools. They actually denote how they would like to spend their portion of those funds. $924,683, $924,683 was spent, was actually allocated to the school sites at $83.25 per student person for them to purchase cleaning supplies and to outfit the triage room, the new health room for these students. So almost, almost $75,000 short of a million of that $4 million was sent to schools for cleaning supplies, for the health room assistant, for PPE, everything that you've got under the sun that kinda goes into that pocket. So a million dollars was sent directly to the schools for them to actually purchase what they need for their site.
I missed the original amount that we got.
4.3 million. So almost a million was sent to schools for the triage room and for cleaning supplies.
All the schools.
And that includes the person, the triage?
No, ma'am.
No, does not include.
We spent $765,000 and I'm doing roundabout numbers. I didn't even round up, $766,000 if I was Rhonda. Cause she would say it all the way down to the penny. But that is how much money we are spending on the triage and custodial support, the additional people for the schools. So three quarters of a million dollars is being spent for the triage nurse or the triage person. It is not a nurse, I'm sorry, and the custodial support. So almost a million in cleaning.
You know, I was surprised honestly to hear the lady talk like she did, but I mean, she's got a, I understand, that's why we need to hear from her. I mean, because they, if they have a concern, it's obviously a concern. But the kids, I think they learn very rapidly to, to clean up after themselves. I watch my grandchildren. We go in somewhere and they grab a sanitary wipe and, you know, they mask up and do the things they need to do, but.
But that's your grandchildren.
But, you know, then I look at the kids that haven't, we haven't gotten on paper, which traditionally, like the superintendent said, Labor Day, more will show up. I'm worried like the two kids that were bludgeoned to death in Melrose the other day are the kids that may be being abused and suffering from mental issues because they're being shut in in some of the backwoods areas of Putnam County that are very isolated. And I see them because I'm out there quite a bit in different areas and I just, I just, I just don't know. I don't know how our, our staff is going to be able to go out and make contact with these people. They're out there. They're out there and a lot of them are.
We're working on that.
We got, we can feed them and we can keep them safe. We've got health nurses and armed people to keep them safe at school. I don't know how much else you could, you could do. I just don't know. But go ahead and continue. I'm sorry.
Of that 4.3 million dollars, about $200,000 were spent on curriculum. You guys approved most of those things already, whether it was the Alex system for our math progress monitoring and for math, it's an online teaching tool for students in middle school and up math. We did progress monitoring for iReady for math for middle school students. We also purchased Myon, something that Jen was just talking about, so that students have access to books no matter where they are, because we were concerned about many things of kids being able to move back and forth between the online environment and the face-to-face environment, as well as going to the library and checking out books. We would rather them be able to access them online with their computer. So $200,000 was spent out of the CARES money for that. I will say that we've also done a lot of money prior to even receiving CARES to try to use budget money, like our department budget areas, to support things that we knew would be a problem in the future. So before we even got CARES, we started triaging, like what is it that we really need to have for people when they come back? And so a lot of our federal programs had zeroed out their projects to try to get Chromebooks in. We did get a shipment of 100 back books the other day, which was very greatly needed for our staff. But we have a problem with getting technology right now and I think Lennon probably can address the wait time it is to get some computers to us. So that it's not like.
That we haven't attempted to get.
We started attempting getting these computers back in March.
COVID has slowed everything in America.
There's a supply and demand issue.
Okay. And so that's what the employees need to hear, especially the concern about the old broken patched up Chromebooks that, yes, we have that audience, it's just.
I will say, when we went to digital in the spring and we were trying to encourage the schools to let people check out Chromebooks, we had somebody say, well, they can just go buy a Chromebook. Now, this was back in March and April. They can just go get their own Chromebook. They're not very expensive. At that time, I had the secretary place a call to Walmart, to Staples, every place that we could. And there were two Chromebooks in the city of Palaca and there were not to be any had after that. There were none coming in. So I will just say, it has been a long-term problem with trying to get some certain technology. One piece of technology that's in that CARES budget is the Logitech. That was like $224,000 and it's that system over there. We have budgeted over 200 and I want to say 30 of those purchased for those, for the teachers to be able to put those in their classroom. It's got a speaker, it's got a wide angle camera. You guys have seen us probably use that before. And yes, that's it. So that is, that is a technology resource that is in the CARES budget. We've gotten 129 of those in and we've ordered another 100. So that is something that's in the CARES budget that has already been received and sent out. So those are just some data points that I could pull up really quick on my computer to address some of the concerns before. What other concerns do you have that I might be able to answer off the cuff?
Go ahead, Mrs. Pickens.
I don't, this probably, the subs online, like if.
So we covered that actually during the Friday digital day, as well as we did another makeup of those for kids, people, kids. The teachers who couldn't attend prior to school starting, we did another one. We had, can you remember how many people attended?
Oh my gosh, it was upwards of 200, way more than we thought we were gonna have.
So we had over 200 people attend, almost 200 people attend on that Friday.
Subs, employees?
Just the employees who were going to be doing digital instruction. And that was a question that they brought up. But when you are a sub and you're in the classroom, you leave lesson plans. And usually it is something that students can do on their own. And so we talked about creating lesson plans that are when the kid logs in, that you have these things to do today and those are the things that you need to do and the teacher would not really be in to meet with them. There's a lot of online tools for students that we can monitor whether they've signed in or not and if they've completed the work. But there really isn't a way to get a sub to come in to a digital classroom. Well, because of the access. The access to all the materials are all through your single sign-on from the district. So your access to the grade book, the access to Canvas, all of those things are very specific to the user. So a sub, it's not like a sub can walk in and pick up your grade book and look at the kids in the classroom. It's signing in to credentials they do not have because it's very specific to the individual.
Okay, so Laura, so if there's not gonna be a sub or whoever, why would a kid come to class if there's no teacher?
Well, you wouldn't know that your teacher probably isn't gonna be there until you actually sign in that morning into Canvas and it pops up, please do these activities. And we've asked the schools to determine how they want to determine attendance that day. Whether it is, please call the school or please email this person to let them know that you've logged into class today. Just so that we can also get attendance for that day. But each school came up with their own idea of what that should look like.
Oh, okay. So the train, what was the training y'all had Friday where there was 200 and something people? What, was that, did that involve Canvas at all?
So for Canvas, that's actually, that's a great question. Canvas has been one of those trainings that we've been offering for optional for elementary all throughout last spring, up until the last day of the school year last year. We offered it as an option for elementary folks, knowing that they would be our sort of priority group as we started back this fall. We offered multiple sessions to our middle and secondary folks who took advantage of almost every offering that we put out there. We've had full capacity in all of those. We're gonna continue and we did continue up through pre-planning, offering a number of, a number of ways to get Canvas training from, for those that love a video, we offered up videos through the Canvas shell so they can go in and access and get at their fingertips help on anything that they may question. But for some of us, myself included, that is not the way that I go about learning. I like to have a live person. So we also had Susan available all through pre-planning and she hosted sessions every day, all day long. She did everything from, here are some, here are two days of bite-sized sessions for those who can only do like one piece at a time. I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna join you for an hour and then I've got to go do something else because I can't stay with this for, you know, the full eight hours. But she also offered some intensive advanced courses in Canvas during pre-planning that were half-day for folks to join in. Now, I have tried to have very clear messaging with administrators because what I don't want to have happen is I don't want to force people into sessions that they feel are not relevant to them. So we have tried really hard with our PD, really over the last two years and especially during all this, to offer everything as an option. So you can do this or you can do this or you can do this, depending on your individual needs. What we're finding now are there are some folks, there's a few, not a lot, but a few, who didn't or weren't able to take advantage of any of those offerings. So the good news is, we have got coaches who very quickly, and I have to shout out the coaching team from the Department of Teaching and Learning, because they're incredible. And we've added a few, we've added Laura Yeomans to the team who brought with her Canvas, which is incredible. So she's been able to join right along with Susan Gaborio and fill those advanced needs to answer all the advanced questions. All of our other content area coaches have also been trained in Canvas now. So as they've been out this first week of school, including today, that's mainly what they've been addressing. We haven't gotten to unfortunately, a lot of content yet because we've been really trying to help troubleshoot and problem solve Canvas questions and Zoom questions and Google meets questions, just so that folks can feel really comfortable with those pieces before we jump really deep into content area support. So please know that those people are there and I hope any teachers who are listening to this know that as well. We have an incredible team and they are here to support any needs that they may have. Susan Gaborio, I just need to say this out loud one more time. She has been here, in fact, one night till 2:00 AM, she was helping some of our teachers just because she hates to see somebody with that angst and that struggle. And so till 2:00 AM, I was back in the building early, Laura was in the building early. She was back here at 6:00 AM to set some additional meetings far outside of her contract time just because we want to make sure that people feel supported. So at this point, if we have folks who still have needs, we're still here. We're gonna start our PD back up again soon for teachers, but we wanted to give them a window of time where they could get that one-on-one before we started offering small group and virtual PD again. But it's coming. So those folks who need that intensive support, it's on its way for all the equipment, including the new cameras.
Well, and that's what I wanted to hear. It sounds like to me, there's no reason for, other than, you know, somebody like me who's not very technologically savvy, to not know how to, to access Canvas and use Canvas. There's all kinds of ways for them to get help.
There is.
What about the students who don't have a clue about Canvas?
Yes. So that's one of the reasons in, in a lot of our plans for this, this year, we added into, like for our ELA units, we added in some structure and routine pieces to help teachers embed those things right out of the gate. Because what we felt kind of concerned about is what if we get back in, even those who are coming in brick and mortar, and then you have to close a classroom or something like that. Or a kid has to now be out for 10 days. We wanted to make sure that right out of the gate, we were addressing the needs of our virtual students or our PCSD digital and those brick and mortar students to make sure they had a comfort level pretty quickly. That's also why we've added those parent sessions.
That's right.
Because we just, I mean, here's, I want to say this, Canvas is not easy, right? It's not easy. Anytime you're learning a new technology tool, it's a challenge, you know? Anytime you try to learn anything new, it's a challenge. So our teachers really overall, I have to say, they have been incredible. If you look at Facebook, it's so nice to see so many great posts from teachers and from admins giving shout-outs to the folks who are there supporting and trying to help make this better. But learning something new is hard and I don't want to minimize that. It is definitely challenging, but we do have a ton of things in place to try to help make it a little bit better. I just hope that folks will take advantage of all the service. I just hope that folks will take advantage of all the services that we have available for them.
And so the husband, the husband that came out of concern for the wife with the, I think he said, point of that-
Yes.
-student.
Yes.
She would be able to implement and use some of these things to help ease the burdens that she may be-
Absolutely. In fact, we have had, we've had some folks out at the school that she's currently serving and supporting in this week, but we'll have additional, in fact, two coaches reached out to me during the meeting, and I was like, I have a place for you to go tomorrow. And so we have that one-on-one support is there and available. Sometimes they don't know how to reach out to get it, but hopefully with this meeting, it'll help them know that they can just reach out, let their administrator know, or reach out to a coach directly. I mean, again, I cannot say enough about the team that we have supporting our teachers right now. They're in it for the teachers and the kids, and they want to be helpful. So just let us know what we can do, and we'll do as much as we possibly can, including that one-on-one, let me come get in the classroom with you, and I'll help you work through this.
Thank you.
The old broken Chromebooks are on the way.
Rick, I'd just like to ask you a question. You kind of stay up with things on the Tallahassee level. I would anticipate that at the second semester, we would look at maybe going strictly to brick and mortar. I mean, I would think the state would do that.
Oh, God, I-
I would think by then they will probably have a vaccine and, and things will change. But I mean, that's, that's just kind of what I'm feeling. Have you heard anything from Tallahassee?
No, and I think all that is still very unpredictable for us now.
Yeah, I mean, it is for us, for sure.
Yeah, but I think we, I mean, we're prepared, if we had to go long-term with this, these two options, we're prepared to do it. Obviously, we would love for everybody to be brick and mortar again.
Right, right.
But we're prepared for the long haul. Yep.
Boy.
And there's a lot of information. We reach out to them on a regular basis, and there's a lot of, you know, we don't know yet kind of answers.
Or do the same stuff that our people are going through, just trying to take it one day at a time and plan ahead.
And it would be nice if the state would not penalize school districts because of students that have not shown up, because we still have to take care of the ones that are here and, you know, and it just looks like they would go ahead based on what was the projected enrollment and operate from that. Then when the dust settles, they can make whatever adjustments.
Well, when the dust, we're worried about when the dust settles.
Yeah.
And, because there's going to be a day of reckoning.
Yeah, when you have to pay back.
And that's what Ms. Odom is checking on, and we're not getting clear direction on that yet. But I can guarantee you, there will be a day of reckoning when the real numbers will be, you know, paid for. Right, Rhonda?
I just have one other question. Is there a, a cap on an online class teacher?
Okay, that was one of my questions.
So those classes are marked as blended learning because the students can actually be required to come into the school for certain services. If any of the school, actually, we can't do any testing, state testing from home, so they'll have to come in to participate in those things. But if a kid needed some additional interventions, especially around elementary, but we're marking those classes as blended, and blended does not have a class size. And class size does actually only go to core content classes. So that, that's when you talk about class size amendment, it is about your reading, math, science, social studies, core classes, not all. But those are class, those are blended level classes, and so they don't have a class size limit. We want to be responsible, but at this point, when I say I have 45 on roll, I need to make sure that four, all 45 have shown up before I start trying to figure out another way to serve students. Because I've had lots of people say, I have this many on roll, but only 500, but I'll say, day one or day two of Palaca High School, I think they only had, they had less than 600 students in attendance. So I need to make sure that before we start switching around to handle larger classes, that we really do have a true idea of where our students are so that we can make appropriate moves. Because 45 elementary school students is a lot. It is.
Yeah.
It is, but you are not figuring out how they got to school, how they are getting home, taking them to lunch, taking the bathroom breaks, and providing all those sanitizing times in a total-
So 45 online and in brick and mortar?
No, ma'am. Your option two classes are blended classes. They do not have a class size limit, even if they're core-
I have seen the day when we've had 35 to 40 kids in an elementary class, and that's a bad deal.
Those days normally are not here.
Yeah, I know.
We usually don't have that many, but I will say, in the, in the option two classes, they are intentionally larger, mostly because we figured we would have some switching back and forth once school got started. And we needed to give space in the classrooms for kids to be able to return to, to have a space in a class and not put the brick and mortar class beyond.
Yeah, I didn't say I agreed with those days, but I'm just saying, it has been done.
Yeah, we have, thank you, Laura and Jim. Mr. Bowling and Mr. Harvey is here to address any questions you have about technology, custodial supplies, custodial personnel, anything like that, operations generally.
I'd like to say while you guys are thinking of your questions, St. John's County's first day back to school was yesterday.
Yeah.
And so I'm always anxious to watch the news to see how the latest district that went back fare, and it sounds like a broken record.
Yeah.
You always hear the same thing. And I got a call from my son's principal who, you know, raved about a great first day, but there were a few hiccups with technology and some other issues that we need to get ironed out, and we need to find some students, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we're pretty well-versed on what we think will come as far as questions and concerns, so at that point, I'll just open it up.
My only is, was the Aquila being kind of, was that, is that a normal thing, or is just like it just happened?
So with Aquila, we provided a solution to, Beth's out there, right, Beth Leary, where the students can update their Chromebooks themselves, and I gave those instructions to Beth Leary, and we'll post that on the websites too.
Okay.
But the issue with Aquila, I don't believe they returned their Chromebooks. So we had a lot of students that still had their Chromebooks during the summer, and we had a 14-day period of time where those were going to be updated to the newest and greatest version. And those updates just didn't happen fast enough, so we minimized it to a two-day period of time. They still weren't getting it fast enough. So we provided instructions, and I think after those instructions were provided to the schools, then the students were able to have their Chromebooks updated. Also, Canvas gives a little bit of, because I think they were getting the message that said that their Chromebooks were out of date. Canvas kind of gives a false positive where it says that their Chromebooks are out of date, but if the courses aren't published within Canvas, that message does occur. So that was some of the issues. But does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And I would like to say also, four to six months is kind of standard, what we're hearing from multiple companies that we deal with within the school district as far as the lead time that they need to get those bulk items. There's a couple of issues going on. One, flooding in China is affecting a lot of the parts that make up the components to the computers that we use. And so that's part of the reason, obviously COVID. So, I mean, we're, everyone's experiencing those issues. So I just kind of want to reiterate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good.
Any other?
Yeah, I've got it for Thomas, but it's not my turn yet. I'm good. You want me to go?
You go.
Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. How's bus, how's transportation?
Transportation is a little bit better. We put one additional safety procedure in place since the last time we talked about transportation. And just to recap, there wasn't really anything we could do except for make sure the windows were let down as much as we could, even in ventilated buses, make sure the teacher, I'm sorry, the bus driver and all the students wear masks, have hand sanitizer on and off, and then clean between routes, clean and sanitize the buses. So all those things are in place, but our ridership is down quite a bit. Some of our buses, and the ridership has grown just in small increments daily, but at the very beginning, it was about 50%. So students could actually spread out more than we thought they could. And I asked Ms. Vell to put a new procedure in place, which was to allow the first seat behind the driver on each side of the bus to be open, to give the driver a little bit of extra buffer space. And so as far as that note, it's been done universally, universally. But outside of that, you know, there, we've been very upfront in the fact that we just can't space out according to CDC guidelines, thus the mask and the other, the other protocols that are in place, but.
And one, one employee hired with CARES money was an additional cleaner in between-
Yes, that's, that is correct. Yes, ma'am. And that's one per compound, so the bus drivers don't actually have to do that. And in all of our procedures, when we were overseeing the safety plans, both on buses and in schools, we were very careful to try to avoid putting too much on the existing staff. If there was something extra to do, we either hired someone to do it, or we let the kids help out, you know? It's their space that they're sitting in. So a common procedure would be a teacher using a squirt bottle to hit desk in between classes, and on the way in, student, you know, gets a wipe, wipes it down, and then the teacher has an organized procedure in place to do away with that, that wipe, so everybody's not lined up at the garbage can at one time. And, you know, just little things like that to keep the flow of the class moving very quickly, but not have your teachers running around doing a lot of crazy cleaning in between classes. And I'm speaking at a secondary level or in between activities at the elementary level.
I've got one more question now, Thomas, I don't know, any of y'all can just say. Are the protocols for lunch different from school to school about wearing masks at lunch?
No. The protocols for masks are universal in the fact that students have to wear masks at all, all times per their plans, their safety plans, unless they are told that they can take them off by an adult. And that is supposed to happen when they are sitting down, getting ready to eat, now you may unmask.
But you don't have to put your mask back on to chew?
No, ma'am.
Goodness, your lunch has been done.
Okay, that's happening. Okay, I just wondered if the protocols were the same.
I'd rather hear of an instance of people kind of overdoing it than underdoing it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I haven't seen all the lunches, and I'm slowly getting around to the schools, but trying to get there for morning, lunch, and after school is a bit of a challenge, but we'll, we'll get to them.
And we're not perfect. I mean, we're taking it one day at a time and doing the best we can do, and I applaud all of our administrators.
And the comment that I made about lots of recurring issues, it's not to make excuses because we'll gladly do whatever we need to do to make our staff members and students safe. I'm just saying that, you know, we all, the state of Florida has the administrators, and I'm sure the teachers, we're probably talking more now than we ever have, and we're solving issues together, and we all have the same type of problems. So we're coming up with similar solutions, and every, every now and then you hear of something innovative, and then it's innovative for about five minutes because everybody else-
Until something else happens.
And we talk to, I have regular conversations with our neighboring districts, and it's good to hear what other people are doing and also hear that they're having issues as well.
Yeah.
And so we, this is new territory for all of us, and we're definitely collaborating on everything.
Yeah, we just think we had technology issues. Miami-Dade, their whole system crashed.
Yeah.
They're all online, and it just, it was a failure.
Yeah. We're going to be better for it, though.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions for Mr. Bowling or Mr. Harvey or have Kyle here? Kyle can answer some IT questions.
Hi, Kyle Lilquit with the IT department. So I wanted to say something bolt to the student, parent, and staff members of the district. So please be patient with us because it is the start of the school year, and just like how you can flop back and forth between digital and brick and mortar, that your child may take a little while to roster into these applications. And we understand it's frustrating. You may have issues, and we're there for you. And if you need to talk to us, you can call us. But do you understand that that process does take some time, and it takes more than two people, actually, like in behind the scenes? Sometimes it can take up to three days. And two days, one day, it really depends on what your situation is. So I just want to emphasize that, that this, the process with you either coming and enrolling into the school district as a new, new student, or you transferring to a school, or you switching from a digital classroom to a brick and mortar or vice versa.
It's not it.
That takes time and effort of staff members, and we really do want you to be successful in your online learning, but of course, we can only do so much with what we got.
And you said they could call, and so they're to go on the district's website, and they could see the phone number, or you want to give them the number?
So I can, so we can, we can give the number right now, but the number for the parents and students is on the website. Yeah, it is on the website, but, so to say it to the live stream, the number is 386-385-4865. So please call that if you are a parent or student, if you have any issues with technology. But if you are a staff member, and I want to emphasize this, if you are a staff member, please call the IT help desk, which is 386-329-0541. There's a separation between the two for a reason. And unfortunately, there's been some parent phone calls to that particular line, but we've, we've definitely addressed them. We didn't stray them away.
Kyle, could you say the parent number again, just, just in case they didn't have something running down?
So the parent helpline is 386-385-4865.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle was one of mine at least.
Board members, any other questions for anybody in our staff or anything at all?
Ms. McInnes, are you satisfied?
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Carford?
Hi.
Mr. Buckles? Mrs. Pickens?
Yes, I am.
And I'm satisfied, and if there is nothing else to come for the board, we are adjourned.